Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. This is your Weber County Commission. We'll call this meeting to order. To my right is Commissioner Scott Jenkins. To my left is Commissioner James Eber. And I'm Commissioner Jim Harvey. We welcome you here on this great and special day. Seated in our audience today, we stand open this meeting because of this. Our invited guests and veterans, and many even from World War I that are in attendance with us today. World War II, excuse me, II. Today, it'd be fitting, for you veterans especially, we stand for you. We thank you for your service very much. I'm gonna change? No, I'm not. First, our agenda will be as follows. We'll have an invocation this morning by Gary Scow. Following that invocation, the veterans of World War, by Steve Greer from the Color Guard. Sixteen ninety-five Brigham City will post our colors. Following the posting of the colors, we'll have a thought by Commissioner James Eber. We'll go to that point, Mr. Scow.
Honor God, my Father, who can be for this county commissioning. As for thy blessings upon our veterans, and especially upon the family of Major Redd Taker. As for thy guidance that should be given at this meeting today, that may be mine, for the great service of these veterans, the World War I veterans, and all veterans and their families. You receive these things in the name of our Lord and Savior.
Amen.
The audience please rise, don't be gassed in, and both may be seated. Proper hands through, those are veterans, may they salute. Honor Guard, attention, forward march. Please follow me, friends of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. On guard, this message. Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna start with an apology. I'm gonna struggle a little bit today. Those who serve us, in this community, in our armed forces, are pretty dear to me in my heart. I've had opportunity to serve in law enforcement, and serve with men and women who sacrifice a lot. Both in their families and in the actions that they take. They go through things that many times other individuals will never know or understand. And they do it for each other. They do it for the men and women who stand beside them. They do it for their families, and they do it for service to this country. And most people have no idea what they've gone through or what they're going through. Their families suffer in silence many times. They deal with their trials and tribulations that their spouses, husbands or wives go through. And they do it in a manner that we can be proud of. And so, when I sit humbly here in front of those who've given it all, I struggle. And if my wife is here, she'd be chastising me, she'd be saying, "No one wants to hear you cry." Oh, it is just so hard for me because I see men and women who really have sacrificed for this country and for me and my family, and I want to say thank you. My grandfather served in World War II in the Army as a truck driver. He came back from the service, re-enlisted in the Air Force. I guess they had enough people in the Army. The Air Force needed some folks, and he served quietly for thirty years and retired. I saw my grandfather all the time. He never told me one time, I had no idea he served in World War II, till after he passed away. He didn't talk about it. And so, I just wanna say thank you from the bottom of my heart, to families and to you. We don't take care of you enough. We don't recognize you enough. We haven't loved you enough. But Scott Jenkins loves ya. He's so excited he can see you straight today. So, my thought really quickly, and again, I'll quit talking. As we express our gratitude, we must never forget the highest appreciation is not to utter simple words, but to live by them. Ladies and gentlemen, you lived by them. And this grateful country, this grateful community, this grateful commission, and me individually, want to tell you that. And we'll fight for you every time we can, every minute we can. We have a clerk auditor who does everything he can for this community. You have amazing people that work in this community in different areas, George Wallen facility, and others, who love and value you, and I want you to know that we do as a commission. And we want to show you that. And so, thank you very much for your attendance today. It's not always easy coming to these things, I know. But we're here today to recognize you and to tell you we appreciate your service, and to let your families know that we appreciate you also. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, before we move into the presentations, it would be fitting for me to recognize, or for us to recognize Colonel John Eberlin. Would you raise your hand, Colonel? Colonel Eberlin is the Seventy-Fifth Air Base Wing Chief, he's the Wing Chief Commander. We also have Chief Master Sergeant Rodney Coons. And we appreciate them being with us today. You're great partners to us. Thank you so much. We also, Mayor Mike Caldwell from Ogden City is seated in the audience. Mayor Sharon Bowles from West Haven, and Mayor Bob Dandois is also seated in our audience. Did I miss anyone? Mark Johnson, thank you, the CEO of Ogden. I have that written down, but I wanted to stare into the eyes, and I missed something instead of looking down. Do you have a question? Yeah. Do that right now. I'm gonna turn the time over now to Item E on our agenda. Commissioner Scott Jenkins. As a commission, we want to thank you. He has been the one to lead on this project today. It is inspiring. It feels right to be doing this today. We're grateful to have you here, Commissioner Jenkins.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. You know, it's interesting, as I sit here, these guys are young pups here. And I'm an older one, and so, a lot of these people I knew growing up, like Frank Van Metren. My whole life, I've lived next to him. He's a quiet, unassuming man. You just don't think that much, or worry that much. And yet, when I look at him now in this light, I have so much respect for him. As a young man working for Peerless Utah, and most of you people remember that name, it's too old for all of you. But Bill Hartman remembers Peerless Utah. And my dad, he used to put me in a truck when I was seventeen years old, and he'd say, "You go out there on Pennsylvania Avenue and deliver to the Hartmans." I think it was Pennsylvania, wasn't it, Bill? Yeah, there was a little white house there that you used as your shop. And I used to pull up there, and him and all his brothers were in that shop. And your dad was there at that time. That'd be back in nineteen sixty-seven. He was still alive then, wasn't he? Yeah. And so, I used to deliver to the Hartmans out there. And their whole family were plumbers. And I got to know Bill. He was the State Boiler Inspector, and he just meant the world to me, to know him now and see his past. And then, my family. As a young boy growing up, the Englands were a big part of my family. Bill and Gene England were around all the time. Bill and his wife used to come to our house and visit my mom and dad, and they were those friends from Salt Lake that dad knew. And Chester England, their father, I used to home teach when I was young, when I was first put in the bishopric. And I'll never forget, Boy Scouts, they decided they wanted to do this sustaining membership drive and try to get a hundred dollars out of these people. And I remember I went over to Chester's house, and him and his wife Maude were sitting there, and I says, "Chester, they've asked me to come over here and ask you to become a sustaining member." And he says, "What's that, Scott?" And I says, "That means they want you to give a hundred bucks to Boy Scouts." And he just kinda looked at me. He said, "A hundred dollars?" Of course, that was back a lot of years ago, when a hundred dollars meant a lot. And I says, "Yeah, that's what they've asked me to ask you." Well, he gave me the hundred bucks, and he was glad to do it. So, anyway, I'm amazed how many of these veterans I know, and how much you mean to me, you World War II veterans. You are wonderful, wonderful, wonderful people. And you did what you did because you saved our country. And I realize that now. You know, when you talk to some of these guys like Milo Ross, and he's dead and gone, and so is my father, you know, and Merrill, and guys like that, you know, they all served, and they did it very unassumingly, just because they felt like it was their responsibility. So, anyway, we wanted to get as many as you guys here we could today, and thank you. I told Gerald Sin, I spent twenty-five minutes with him night four last. I talked to him, cause I was blue in the face, and he says, "Well, maybe I'll come." But I knew he wouldn't be here today. It's hard, and I understand it's hard. But we wanna thank you for all you've done for us. We are the generations after. I'm a baby boomer, these two are behind that generation a little bit. I'm a baby boomer, so I understand that. And I thank you for saving our way of life and saving this world, because without what you did, it wouldn't have been saved today. And I know that, I firmly believe that. If we hadn't have stood up what we did after Pearl Harbor, we wouldn't be here today. We'd be suiting Adolf Hitler, maybe. And so, you just don't know. So, anyway, we thank you, and we felt like it was very important to honor you today. And so, I wanna thank you for that.
Mr. Chairman, I yield back to you. Thank you. I appreciate that. So, we'll move now to Item E on our commission agenda. We'll go to presentations, and Scott Jenkins will lead that discussion on Item E.
So, we've got your names down here, and we're gonna make a presentation to all of you today. We've each written you a hand letter to thank you for what you've done, and we're gonna give you a little presentation here. So, if y'all sit tight, we'll get to each and every one of you. So, let's go.
Let's go.
Can we watch the video?
Yeah, you wanna do that first? Yeah, that's a good idea. Okay, let's watch, we got a video prepared for you. So, there's two names we didn't get on that video. We got them a little too late. Frank Van Metren wasn't on that, and neither was Gene or Gerald Sin. And so, we'll add those to them. And if you wanna get a copy of that video, we'll give it to you. We'll send you a thumb drive, just let us know.
It's posted right on the web.
So, some of you have brought some memorabilia here today to look at, and we've placed it on this table right here in front of us. And we also have a very nice lady who's standing right there next to that wall. Kim, yeah, she's not the only nice lady here, but she's a real nice one. And she's putting together a book, Weber County's Greatest Generation. And this is the first. This is volume one, and there's two more coming.
Four more.
Four more coming. Oh, good night. What a deal. Anyway, Kim has brought a copy of this for each of you. Now, she's a couple copies short, but if you'll give her her name, she'll make sure you get one. But they'll be up here up front too, just so you know, okay? Very nice book, make sure you get it.
All right, Commissioner, before you go, Kim, thank you for putting together something so we won't forget. Would you like to say a couple words?
I just wanna say a couple of things because I've met many of you through the newspaper, and I am honored to be in your presence. I read your stories, and I read your sacrifices, and I am just so honored. We have, our scheme family has been very involved in World War II, Korea, and Vietnam. I want to tell you that there were two-hundred-and-sixty-five Weber County men killed during the war. And as I read your stories, and I can recognize some of your names, I am just so honored to meet you. I also would like to talk to you, if you would like to get your story on tape, so that we can keep it for generations to come. I would be honored to do that. You just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim, very much. The book is wonderful, you'll love it. I failed to mention Mayor John Beasley, who's joined us at the back of the room from Plain City. Also, if you raise your hand, John. Thank you. We'll start that presentation now. So, there we go. We're gonna call each of your names and raise your hand when we do. Is it Dean Badley? Where you at? Okay, Dean. Right there. All right, Lester Bryan. Where you at, Lester? All right.
You know, there's nineteen of you here today. We found about twenty-four, and there was five or six over to George Wallen that couldn't come. And the rest, well, Gerald Sin, I couldn't talk him into coming, but other than that, there's nineteen of you here, and so, we're grateful for that. Charles Child. Charles, where you at? Raise your hand. Ralph Crandall. Isn't that Ralph, isn't that, Ralph Crandall was on The Honeymooners, wasn't he?
That's the fact, about Camden.
Oh, Camden, that's true. That was Camden.
My son-in-law is your cousin.
Who's that?
Dexter Bell.
Dexter Bell's here. Dexter, where are you? Right there. You're right, he's one of my favorite cousins. All right, Ralph. So, Gene England's the next one. I didn't mention in my comments, you know, Gene's the trucker. So, when you see C.R. England trucking, that's Gene. Just wanna let you know that, so you can connect the dots. It's good to have you here, Gene, today, and we thank you. Dale Gawn. Did I say that right?
Gann.
Okay. William Bill Hartman. The plumber. I wish my dad was here today, he'd love this. Kay Johnson, or no, Robert Hawes. Robert, where you at?
Right here.
Right here in front of me.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you. Thank you for your service.
Now, it's Kay Johnson, right here. Lauren Kay. Lauren, you're a good-looking man. He looks a little younger than the rest of you.
Hard work. Hard work. Thank you, sir. We appreciate you, sir.
Do you go by Bill?
Yeah.
Good to have you here, Bill.
Thank you for your service. All you do is serve.
Casey Kunemara. Casey, it's good to have you here. It had to be tough on you serving as a veteran in World War II. I say this had to be hard on you, serving in World War II.
Thank you, sir.
You know, this is overwhelming to me. I can hardly compose myself. You are such wonderful individuals. Kenneth Mickelson. I met you coming in, Kenneth, for the first time. Thank you very much. You can see that you're soldiering, and he wants to stand right up.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your service. Thank you. Thank you.
I want you to say what you just said to me. This, this is Terry Scow. He ran the Veterans Association for the State of Utah for years, and he just told me something about Casey that I didn't know, and it's worth repeating.
Thank you, Commissioner. I was just mentioning that Casey Kunemara, fellow with the red and blue hat, served with the 442nd Regimental Combat Team in World War II as an infantryman. That was the most decorated unit in all of World War II. But probably more significantly, his family was in an infantryman camp in California while he was serving his country with the 442nd. And I would also mention Bob Ramos, in the Air Force uniform, was in the infantry in World War II. I have a great fondness for infantry folks, and just wanted to recognize those folks.
You know, I'm overwhelmed by some of the conditions that, under which some of these people had to serve. It was overwhelming. Fred Roberts. You know, Fred, I had a devil of a time getting in touch with him. I had his name, and he lived up on the 24th, isn't it? And I kept going up to his house, knocking on his door, and we'd call him, and finally we made contact. And I really appreciate you making the time to come here today, Fred. Thank you.
Well, in fact, I should thank all of the relatives of these folks that got him here today. This was not easy to get these folks here. So many of them wanted to stay home. That's what Frank told me. He says, "Well, I don't get out much these days." I told him, I said, "You won't regret it if you come, I promise you." So thank you.
Roland Strom. Roland, thank you for making the effort.
Looks like you've got a bad arm there. Thank you for your service, sir. Thank you. Right here.
Delton Stanger.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you very much for what you did. Thank you for your service.
And finally, Frank Van Metren. Frank, you were always last, weren't you, with the V in front of your name towards the end? Frank's been my neighbor all my life. He lived right next to the folks. You know, it was interesting, everybody fights about property, and I remember the day that I was standing out in the backyard, and Frank started moving his fence next to it. And I said to my dad, "What's he doing over there?" And he said, "Well, he surveyed his property and found out that he was five, five or six feet over on our side." Fifteen, okay. Thanks, Gene. Well, we didn't know what, but he just went out and started moving the fence because it was the right thing to do. The law protected him. If he didn't want to move that fence, he didn't have to, but he did. And I've often thought of that, as I've thought about what wonderful neighbors you You know, most, a lot of these guys are in the Navy. The Navy must have, they had more survivors. Gene, you were in the Army, weren't you?
Right.
That's what I thought. There aren't as many Army guys as left over.
Infantry lost quite a few.
Yeah, infantry lost quite a few. Well, listen, I want to give these guys a round of applause, but before we do it, I want you to remember, as we give these guys a round of applause, please stand and do that. This is, this is very small for the accolade you really deserve for what you've done for us, but we, we didn't want Veterans Day to pass. There were several, like Gail Gibbs was one I had invited, and I see him in the obituaries a week ago. So you fellas are dying faster than we can get you here, many of you, and we didn't, we didn't want to leave this opportunity by, so we jumped on it as fast as we could, and we want to thank you. Thank you very much, all of you. So did, did we have any World War II vets in that I'm not aware of that we missed today? I didn't think we did. We tried to greet each and every one of you. No, you know, Vern's not a veteran. I, no, he, he had a foreign deferment. Same thing with Keith Lund. He had a foreign deferment. So, anyway, we tried, we tried. Do you want to say something? Please come up here. Please come on up here, so they can hear you.
I just want to thank Scott and the commission for honoring the veterans today. It made it special for everyone, I think. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You know, we had, some of this memorabilia that was brought in today is very unusual. One of this, Lauren, is this your picture? Yeah, Lauren Kay brought in this picture of the, of the signing at the end of World War II, and we thought you might want to see that, and Frank Van Metren brought a picture of him on his ship, and the number of people on that ship who served with him. And so they're up here, and you might want to see that, and then don't forget to get your book before you go home, that Kim has brought. It's very special.
Mom?
Yes.
Kim's father.
Also, Kim's father. Oh, Kim, did you know that?
I didn't know.
Your dad is on this picture. That is amazing, isn't it? You know, it's kind of a small world sometimes that we live in. Anyway, thank you for letting us honor you today. Appreciate it.
That's a copy of the Japanese photograph that's on the Missouri that signed that surrender. Now, when they dropped the first bomb, the, those men there were the ruling ones that fought the war. And they were fighting the enemy, or the, they was going to fight to the end. When they dropped the second bomb, the emperor overrode their ruling and says, "We are quitting." I was among the first troops that entered Japan after the war, and the people were all scared of us. The third morning, the kids found out we had candy in our pockets. It broke the ice, and everybody was friendly from then on. Thank you. We appreciate what you're doing here today. We still have a few years left.
Would any of the rest of you care to say anything? You're welcome to, if you'd like to.
I was on the, one of the destroyers that took the New Jersey and the day after the Missouri signing, and, and we could see from our deck before we left, we went to Wakayama, Japan, and we could see the pleasure boats coming out with the Japanese ready to sign the surrender.
I imagine that was. You guys were probably so tired of fighting by the time you got to that point, you couldn't stand it. Well, thank you very much. So, we, we, this is part of our meeting, so I apologize to you. We actually have business to conduct, but we're going to open these doors right here, and we have a reception set up for you. So if you folks want to go out there and get a sandwich or something to eat, I'm not sure what we even have out there. We have a reception set up for you, and we'll go ahead and finish conducting our business. If you want to sit here, it won't take long. We tried to get this as short as we could today. So thank you.
That's somebody asking if she can come up to take a picture with the veterans while they're sitting here.
Oh, you know, while we're all here, could we get you veterans to come up here and stand together so we could take a picture of you? That might be actually hard to do, but we'd like to get a picture of you all while you're here. In fact, I think the newspaper's here somewhere, aren't they?
Yes.
Yeah.
I asked Mary, I says, "Who's this guy Fred Roberts that somebody's trying to get hold of us?"
Thank you. Please come up here.
Come on, Bill. You're losing weight. You're just a skinny guy. Come on up there, just move and get a step back.
Thanks, Scott, for helping with that. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Do you want to come this way?
A lot of bosses.
Oh, here, where the pictures go on, huh?
Can you fellas squeeze together a little?
Unfortunately.
Right here.
Scott, right here.
All right, you guys, look forward now.
You might have to back up a little.
Okay, remember the cheese part of this. Cheese. You guys are awesome.
Hey.
Right here in the middle.
Commissioners, where's the other two commissioners? Come here.
I want to get in this picture.
Thank you all.
No, I just didn't want me to trip on the wires, so I moved that one back.
Hold on, can you click it back? Dot James, patient? Dot James.
That was great. This was fantastic. Thank you very much. Appreciate your help. I appreciate it.
Hi Scott?
Great guy. Thank you.
Test, test.
How you doing today?
I need one.
Fatima, are we ready?
Is it rolling over here?
It's okay if it's no microphone. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to item. Cortland, Ricky? Ready? Cortland? Ricky? Ricky? Colonel Everland? Everland, John Everland?
Hello? 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 Hello?
Yeah, it'll record it either way. I need Fatima. Ready? Okay. We'll move on to item G, or consent items on our commission agenda. Commissioners? Item G, request for approval of warrants 1597 through 1604, and 433-826 to 434-023, in the amount of $1,362,375.29. Item number two is a request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $85,392.12. Item three is a request for approval of minutes for the meeting held on November 6, 2018. Item four is a request for approval of new business licenses. And item five is a request for approval of road dedication in the Liberty Acres subdivision, a two lot subdivision consisting of 7.826 acres. Adding additional acreage to Liberty Park. Commissioners, any question on the consent items?
No chair, not for me.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve. Mr. Hatch, will you give us some comments on that?
You bet. Just real quickly, we had 10 purchase orders this week for $85,000. Just under half that amount, or $39,000, is for the library. That's to design the replacement of the septic system up at Ogden Valley, as well as the design for the lightning protection system at the southwest branch. 28% of that amount, or $24,000, is for property management, and that is the Depot Drive fencing project. As far as checks, we issued 206 checks for $1.4 million. 42% of that amount, or $566,000, is for the transfer station, and most of that is disposal fees. 26% or $355,000 is escrow release for the Ridge subdivision, and that's all.
Thank you, Ricky. Commissioners, I want to point out that the lightning rod for the library, I want you to know that in 49 years, our main library never had one lightning strike. So, a cost savings move, they purposely took the lightning rod out of the new headquarters' library. Well, in the first year, it's, now the headquarters library's in Roy. The first year, that's had 10 lightning strikes. And there's millions of dollars worth of data held on those computer equipment, so this is a necessary expense, but it's many times more the cost than it would have been in the original construction. So that's why they're putting it back in. So, I support this. We have a motion in a second. If there's no more comment, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries. I purposely omitted item F, our public comments, off the agenda. I'll move item F to now. Any of you who have items that you wish to discuss that will appear on the remainder of the agenda, may come forth now and address the commission, and we'll hear that now, before any of our action items. So we'll hear you before we take any action items. If you do that now, limit your comments to three minutes. If you'll state your name and address before you address the commission, you can come forward again now. I heard Randall Wynn, North Ogden, Utah. Your address, Mr. Wynn? Your address? 2412 Barker Parkway. Thank you, go ahead. We're having problems with our mic, so just speak loud, Beautywood, please. Thank you.
I am speaking concerning the item you'll be addressing at the end of the future. And that's the land use with regard to our mountains behind our city. I've been to several meetings, and the vast majority of our communities, and I've heard that even in Ogden Valley, it's the same, are against the proposed Ogden Valley. And I'd just like to let you know that we feel very strongly about that, about the value here. And would like you to consider that, and follow the will of the people, and not the high pressure and tactics of the people running, buying for this land take to the use of our water, which is so precious to us, to make snow. I think the people's wishes need to be, and I hope that if there are any of you that are financially positioned to gain by this, that you would recuse yourself in any vote of this stuff. I, we feel very strongly that we do not want that doggone coming down the face of our mountain. And we don't want the traffic and the use of the water. I know the proprietor has vowed that he never fails, that he will get this done. And I'm afraid that he will try to get this done, and you gentlemen, and others in the state, to produce this. He's a powerful man, and I realize that, and I ask that.
Thank you for your comments. Miss Commissioner Ebert would like to respond to those.
So, really quickly, the roadless recommendation the state was looking for is just, would have just been a recommendation to the state. The property is federal property, and the federal government makes the designation of roadless, not the county commission or the state. So, in order for any recommendation to the state and an adoption by the state, the federal government would then have to give that land over. And talking to the local park ranger, that is not something that's even in any type of discussion. The reality of it is, we had to do a management plan for the state, and that's really all the state was asking us, is what are our thoughts? But as of this time, there's no movement on any levels for the state to give any of that federal property or any federal property back to the states. And so, there is no, North Ogden or the Upper Valley's not in danger of that property being given back to the state, which would then have any management plan recommendation. So, again, this is something that was looking twenty years down the line. If in twenty or thirty years, the federal government wanted to give tracts of federal property back to the states, and I just don't see any of that happening, so.
That's the most current update we have for you. Commissioner, any comments? Any other comments from the audience? None being recognized, we'll close that section, or item F, public comments. And having successfully or unanimously gone through our consent items G, we'll now move to item H on our agenda, which are our action items. Commissioners, the first two action items will be heard today by Bill Ross. Mr. Ross, the request for approval of resolution adopting an interlocal cooperative agreement between Weber County and the Utah Division of Juvenile Justice Services regarding the construction of a fence along Depot Drive in Ogden. Mr. Ross? Good morning.
We can't hear you, Bill.
It's not, it's not.
Mr. Ross? Will you come to the, come to the dais, or that's great, right there.
Can you hear me?
Yep. We just have a last few projects that are in relation to the construction of the Depot Drive projects.
No matter.
And we, so this, this first one is just a resolution with an agreement with the Utah Division of Juvenile Justice Services. It's in regards to the fence as part of that contract that we'll be putting on the east side of Depot Drive. We're responsible for that fence, but the Division of Juvenile Justice Services contributed to help us make that fence the best quality we can, by contributing to the cost of that so that we can do it in black vinyl coating instead of just a regular chain leak fence. So the cost that they'll be contributing is five thousand four hundred and thirty dollars, which was this resolution.
That's great. Commissioners, any questions?
No question.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. Will you approve resolution?
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four, as stated.
Motion in a second. I'll call for the vote, or excuse me. We have a motion in a second.
Commissioner.
Resolution, Fatima?
Commissioner.
Construction of a fence along Depot Drive in Ogden.
This is in regards to the same fence that I just talked about, going along the east side of Depot Drive. Storemore and More LLC is the private owner that owns the property there. He is going to help us contribute to that, as we need to put barbed wire fence along the top, and he'll be, he'll be paying for those costs, which is one thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion in a second. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you. Item three will be presented by Commissioner, excuse me, by Sean Wilkinson, former commissioner.
Former Commissioner Sean Wilkinson.
Request for approval of a substituted contract between Weber County and FFKR Architects to prepare, design, and construction documents for the demolition of the Weber Center parking structure.
Is Commissioner Jenkins sitting in your spot?
Building elevation and design of the new surface park.
You heard this contract first on October sixteenth. Since that time, Woodbury Corporation, who is our partner in the Weber Center, has given us some more comments and some suggestions that they wanted included in this contract. That is what we are changing, just for clarification purposes, so that we all are on the same page and we all feel comfortable. You have the suggested changes, one, two, three, and four, in your memo, and if you have any questions about those, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, nothing changes substantially. The cost is still the same. This is just for clarification purposes.
Commissioner Jenkins, as this is in your portfolio, do you have any questions or comments you'd like to make regarding this?
None.
None being heard. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second for the approval of a contract between Weber County and FFKR, as stated item number three in our action items. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Wilkinson. Item number four, Mr. Olson. It's a contract or a request for approval of a contract buying between Weber County and S Bond for entertainment at the two thousand nineteen Hof German Fest. Mr. Olson.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is one of our main bands that we are bringing to the German Fest. We're pretty excited about them. They come with several different styles of music, as well as the alpinhorns. And so, we're really excited to get this going, so we can get their visas and everything taken care of.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioners. Questions? Pretty excited about the Hof German Fest?
Yes, we are.
Mr. Olson, what are the dates of the two thousand nineteen Hof German Fest? January?
Catch me off guard. The eighteenth and nineteenth? That doesn't sound right.
You said that with some trepidation. I'll just kind of venture a guess, that the eighteenth and nineteenth, two thousand nineteen's correct. That's official German music and food. It'll be great. Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to approve the S Bond or the entertainment for the Hof German Fest.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Olson. Item number I is a public hearing. I'll request a motion to adjourn the public meeting and convene a public hearing.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The public hearing to consider, this is a public hearing to consider, and or take action on a request to vacate a fourteen-foot public utility easement located on lot twenty-three of the West Hills subdivision. Mr. Yavorino?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. So, the applicant, a couple of months ago, came in looking for a land use permit to build a storage building in the backyard of his property. After reviewing the site plan, it showed that there's actually a public utility easement there. And so, as an option for the applicant or landowner, we gave an option of either relocating the structure, or he could go through the vacation process. And so that's why we're here today. So the applicant is requesting to vacate a fourteen-foot public key hill, the easement. The easement is about a hundred and forty-five feet back from the front property line. And, let's see here. After reviewing, after, the engineers have actually made a site visit, and upon their inspection, they found that there are no drainage lines along that route. The applicant has also provided us with letters from Rocky Mountain Power and Dominion Energy and Taylor West Weber Water. And this morning, he actually provided an additional letter from Century Link. Though all three of those utility providers have stated that they're okay to vacate. They're okay to relinquish their rights across that easement. And so, staff recommends approval to vacate the easement on lot twenty-three of West Hills subdivision on Mr. Steve Anderson's property there. Based on the conditions stated in the report, and also the findings stated in the report. And any questions for me, or the owner is here with us today as well.
Great. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Yavorino? With the applicant, Steve, you want to come and say a couple of things? Are you okay? You all right? Has everything been stated fairly for the two of you? You believe it has been stated fairly. Very good. Are there any other public comment concerning the vacation of this easement or item two on the public hearing? There's no public comments. Commissioners, do you have any comments?
Motion to approve.
We have, we have to request.
I'll make a motion. We adjourn our public hearing and enter it back into our public meeting. Second.
We have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Now we're on item number five. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second.
Commissioners, excuse me, it's ordinance twenty.
It's ordinance number twenty? It's a roll call vote. Fatima?
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Aye.
And Chair Harvey.
Aye. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you for doing the due diligence on that, you two. Appreciate that. Any Commissioner comments? None being recognized. Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We adjourn.